In the common council chambers at City Municipal Building, Portage, Columbia County, Wisconsin. All interested persons may appear in person or by their attorney or by agent for the purpose of offering proof either for or against the installation of sidewalk and prudent work. dated this twenty-sixth day of August, two thousand and twenty-four.
If there's anybody who would like to speak regarding this matter, please step up to the podium and state your name and your address, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kelly Welch. I own and reside at two twenty-seven East Howard Street. So it looks like I have one square that is slated for replacement. It definitely does need to be replaced. However, that particular square was replaced fairly recently. I tried to find the exact year. It was either two thousand and thirteen or two thousand and fourteen. It was the only square that has that was replaced at the time, and in that first winter, it heaved, and it has just been getting worse every winter since. The rest of my sidewalk has been very stable, no cracks, no movement. Everything has been pretty solid. The rest of that sidewalk has been there longer than I've owned the home. I've been in the house about seventeen years now. So what I'd like to ask is because that is a fairly new replacement and it was replaced by the city's contractor, I'd like to ask that you please consider not billing me for that work, the three forty-five fifty, because I believe it was shoddy workmanship in the first place. So that would be my ask, is that you would consider either reducing or eliminating that fee for me. That's all I have. I appreciate all of your time.
Thank you. If there's anyone else that would like to speak regarding this matter, please step up to the microphone and state your name and your address, please. If there's anyone that would like to speak regarding this matter, please step up to the microphone and state your name and your address, please. Hearing none, I guess we'll conclude the public hearing aspect of tonight's meeting, and we'll move on to the regular common council meeting. So I will call the meeting to order. Jill, will you call the roll, please?
Bernander.
Here.
Crowley.
Here.
Bauer Frye.
Present.
Dean.
Beany.
Beany, okay. Green.
Here.
Paul.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Next is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just would like to test the audio on the web stream first before we go any further. Carmen, can you first say something again, just to make sure it's working?
Turn it off.
Perfect. Now, Shonda, can you?
Yes, can you hear me?
Perfect. I can't believe it. It's all working. So I'll just keep this on mute until we get to first Shonda and then Carmen. Perfect.
Next, we have approval of the agenda.
Yep, and I would like to remove items D-two and D-four unless anyone objects.
They were placed on the agenda. We'll get to why they're removed, but there's no action to be taken on them.
Okay. All right, then we'll move on to the next one.
Presentation, that one?
Yep.
Presentation by Ms. Wisconsin, two thousand and twenty-four. Mandy Gennard, Gennord.
Well, I guess if she shows, we'll come back to that. So we'll move on to the next one.
Next, we have public comments.
We do have a public comment, right? Or did she already spoke? Okay. So then we'll move on to the next one.
Next, we have approval of minutes of common council meeting, September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Alderperson Wetzel.
Common council meeting, September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Alderperson Green.
Second.
Any other corrections, changes? Hearing none, we'll have Jill call the roll, please.
Crowley.
Aye.
Bauer Frye.
Aye.
Beany.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Bernander.
Aye.
Next, we have the consent agenda. Tourism promotion, September fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. Library board, September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Business improvement district, September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four. Land commission, September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Parking recreation board, September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Alderperson Green.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Alderperson Paul.
Second.
Any corrections, changes? Jill, will you call the roll, please?
Bauer Frye.
Aye.
Beany.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Bernander.
Aye.
Crowley.
Aye.
Motion carries.
You're doing a great job, Jill.
Next, we have the administrative reports, recap of healthcare discussion and presentation at Human Resources.
I'm going to keep it summary. The, I think, very good presentation last night and the discussion that ensued at the Human Resources Committee meeting, the only Alders, everyone was there, Alderman Paul, Alderman, Alderwoman Bauer Frye, and Alderman Beany were maybe the only ones. Did you watch that at all, the last meeting? Human Resources, looking at health insurance in the city. I'll just go over it very briefly. Our rates are increasing significantly with our current plan. They're slated to go up thirteen and a half percent next year in twenty-five in the current plan. That comes out to that increase, what that looks like in dollars is a four hundred and sixty, excuse me, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollar increase to the city. By fund, it means different things, but that's the whole dollar amount for all city operations for the same healthcare coverage. But if you look at the true cost for twenty-five, we are adding new FTEs within fire EMS. That's in a separate fund, so it doesn't affect other funds, but the true cost is four sixty-three, three oh two increase. So we decided that it was worthwhile to look at other options. I'm glad we did. We tried to get, looked at options that were the same as the current plan. The options we did receive back were not showing any savings at all. There were, some were slightly smaller increases, but we excluded that and moved on to looking at what alternatives existed within our current, I'll call it a carrier, which is the Employee Trust Fund ETF, and then also other options outside the ETF with the high deductible options in each. Skip over that for now. ETF high deduction, deductible option, increase in deductible limit substantially. It is now an IRS qualified high deductible plan. These are literally the minimums to qualify sixteen fifty and thirty-three hundred. It was staff recommendation that, you know, include a fifty percent reimbursement with an HSA. The current deductible limit is paid for by the city via an HRA, so that's a major change. Allows employees to keep the network they're in, but there was also a major difference, which co-insurance was ten percent after deductible. So in a catastrophic year for an individual would be a five thousand dollar additional cost, plus the difference in the deductible that wasn't met in the HSA, and the premiums were virtually the same compared to this year. This blacked out number is the renewal rate. So slight savings over what could have been or just about the same as what it is now. So that was one option. With the increased deductible participation by the city, what could have been a thirteen percent lower actually ended up at a four percent increase because the HRA's reimbursement deductible would be upfront employees to keep regardless, so there's a difference there. The Dean Health High Deductible Plan, same, similar setup. Instead of a sixteen fifty deductible for single, it was three thousand. Thirty-three hundred dollar family moved to six thousand. Still recommended that HSA at fifty percent. The major difference being there is no co-insurance after the deductible. So in that catastrophic event, that six thousand dollar possible increase is capped by a, to a three thousand or a fifteen hundred dollar increase. So deductible higher, catastrophic event, lower impact. I think an advantage there is employees already do use Dean in the city through that ETF option. Dean is an option. It's just a lot more expensive through ETF than going directly with Dean. The premium rates saw a pretty big reduction. The city's portion went down twenty-three percent, and the single compared to renewal went from one oh four to seventy-nine forty-four, and a family instead of two fifty-four, forty-seven went down to one ninety-five, forty-two. So the way I look at it is if you're a family, you will save twelve hundred dollars a year automatically on the premium. So if you couple that with the deductible and the HSA benefit, you would have to eclipse forty-two hundred dollars in expenses before it started negatively affecting you, because that's three thousand plus twelve hundred. It's a little different in the single, but proportionally the same. Further premium analysis, ETF High Deductible Plan also offered Dean, but there is major discrepancies. That is insurance. The ETF option in the High Deductible for Dean was one seventy-two, twelve. Going directly with Dean was, yeah, see, this, this number's wrong. It's actually seventy-nine, ninety. Last night I went over this, too.
Next slide. Next slide.
Yep. I did. I said I needed to delete that. Very good. Yes, I remember now. So the current plan that we have now is shown in black in twenty-four. There's a thirty-four percent decrease if we renewed our current plan, thirty-two and a half percent on the family. Twenty percent of the city employees are currently in the ETF Dean option. Their plans go down sixty percent next year. So if you're one of those employees, when you take the savings, you are much closer. I believe you have to spend like fifty-three hundred dollars before it starts to negatively affect you in that scenario. So, you know, my goal here was twofold. We certainly couldn't absorb an increase, especially considering last year's budget. You're really getting into core things when you start cutting more, so I was really looking for a savings. And to protect the most vulnerable and to lower the premium for everybody regardless of usage. So this Dean option, in my opinion, out of the, out of the options that we have researched is the best. The sole Dean option reduces total city costs by one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars over current year. Or the renewing with ETF is two ninety-three, three forty-two. That is a very large spread from savings to expenses. The advantage here is, you know, we also did look at, okay, we could renew. The city can't really absorb any more employee costs, so we could put the entire premium increase on the employee except for fire and police because they have union contracts. If you did that, everybody's paying more or very close to what the High Deductible Plan is doing anyway, without the option of retaining the three thousand dollars in the HSA for their own use whenever, forever. So our, my recommendation is to go with the Dean plan, establish the HSA. That's, that'll be new for us, and it'll be a very good thing. Dealing with retirees, there's a lot of retirees still attached to the city's plan on the ETF side. Non-Medicare retirees can still stay on our Dean plan if they choose. It will be cheaper for them, but a higher deductible. Those on Medicare have to find different supplements. The ETF supplement is no longer going to be available to them by, Dean does not allow that. We have letters ready, notifications, we have consultants to help put people in a new plan. It's just getting people to talk to a professional, because the plans are generally cheaper outside of ETF anyway. So I don't expect anybody to pay anymore. It's just the process of people that are retired to have to go through that process and find something new. We are required to do that notification on our end as an ETF member. So the final recommendation, leave the ETF, implement the sole Dean option, engage Dean Health with option presented, commit to fund no less than fifty percent deductible, single and family respectively, via an HSA. This will be a first dollar benefit. This rolls annually through retirement and converts to a four oh one or similar plan at retirement, which is a big, big deal, because we don't allow that now. The FSA and the HRA don't do that. Whatever is unused, you can put up the eighty-one hundred of your own money into it annually. You can invest in the stock market. It's capital gain deferred, growth deferred, and income tax deferred. So it can be another retirement account, depending on what you want to do. Struct staff to take all measures to implement the new plan, implement HSA, educate employees, new benefits, coordinate meetings, facilitate smooth transition for retirees. And I am also working on a proposal possibly to bring October tenth for a possible pilot program for an incentive slash reward, however you want to call it, for those that aren't taking city healthcare. And also an incentive for, maybe somebody's spouse has a plan that is, maybe they're taking the cities for over a few hundred dollars, right? That's, that few hundred dollars in savings converts to twenty-three thousand in expenses to the city. I think there's enough, there's probably a handful of people on the margins where a incentive, maybe I'm seeing commonly fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars annually. That is a big swing in the city's favor. If somebody takes the incentive, now, now the incentives are turned, or now it makes sense for them to be on a different plan, right? So the out-of-pocket cost could be less over here because you received a benefit. I wouldn't want to say it's a forever thing. If it yielded no results, then we shouldn't do it anymore. There's about ten people that don't take insurance now, so one additional person electing not to take our coverage would essentially pay for the people that are currently not taking insurance, and then everyone after that is a gain. You want to be careful. You don't want to make it too lucrative, because we also have a pool to maintain. You know, you don't want everybody leaving. It's sort of a balance. And then, looking at this HSA benefit that we're providing, possibly, and there's some legal that needs to look at this, some employers, and I think this makes sense, especially in respect when you have your own insurance pool, maybe in two thousand and twenty-six to get the HSA benefit January second, you just have to provide proof from your doctor that you did an annual physical, because that avoids a tremendous amount of cost to the insurance if things are caught before they manifest to something catastrophic. It's common. I don't think it's that onerous, considering it's a hundred percent free visit to begin with through insurance, preventative care, and it ensures that our pool isn't exposed to unnecessary risks. But we'll see. I'm still working on those two things. It's been sort of racking my brain, these things. And that's it. That's the big summary. So we stay in ETF, we spend a half a million more. We stay in ETF High Deductible, we spend four percent more. We go to Dean, we save one hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. So that's that. And the committee recommended to go to Dean. That's, that's my reading.
Do any of the Alderpersons that were not there last night have any questions on this?
And it'll come back up later in the meeting.
Oh, Karen, I'm sorry.
Okay. I was there last night, but I have a question. When it's talking family, is that talking employee and spouse? And what about dependents?
Family is considered anything, anybody with a spouse or children. So if you have just a spouse, it's still considered family. So any, anything, anybody who has a spouse and children, spouse or person, child, you know, maybe a single parent, anything that isn't single is family.
So how, but how many people does that cover? Two people, three people?
It's as many as you have.
For that same price?
Which is why the price is so much higher. The risk to the insurer, somebody just married and no children, you know, you still have to cover the people with a spouse and five children. There used to be, or may, maybe there, in the past, there was a spouse plus one option. That got, I think, internally controversial, because then it made the family plan even more expensive, because the children are generally the cost drivers. So I think that was dropped several, the idea of it several years ago, because it was just pushing more to the family side. I think it's unlimited. I think kids need to be paid.
Oh, yeah. Any other questions? All right, Jill, I guess we'll move on.
Next, we have new business, finance, and administration, discussion and possible action on claims.
Alderperson Bernander.
I see on the claims, there's the two point nine million to color for the park, Public Works. Park and Rec Garage is curious how that's coming along.
Yeah, project's coming along really good, if I can speak.
Obviously, you can.
We're set to be completely enclosed doors, windows, et cetera, by mid-October. Project's going really well. They're finishing up kind of the site grading now, getting ready for pavement to take place before November. At that point, I was just talking to an Alderperson before the meeting. If anybody wishes to do a brief walk through the facility, we would be happy to take you on it. Lot going on right now inside, but I think over the next month, you'll start to see less, less people outside working, and they'll all be inside, so.
Yeah, Alderperson Green approached me a couple weeks ago and said that he would love to go out there. I was like, well, you're an Alderperson. You're allowed to go out there anytime you want. I mean, you're the ones who authorized this project, and, and the people that are out there, in charge out there, are more than happy to show you around. I mean, all you have to do is stop out there. Make sure you have your city badge with you. And if you just pull into the lot and stand by your car, I guarantee you someone's going to walk up to you and, and ask you, correct him?
Well, he didn't walk up to me. I ended up having to go in.
Well, because he was probably in the trailer at the time.
He was in the trailer having a meeting, so I ended up going in the trailer. If he doesn't come out, just go into the trailer, they'll be in there.
And they're more than happy to show you around, so.
He was very nice. It was, it was a nice tour.
And if you wish to, to have a guided tour by me, like I said, I'm available quite often.
It's a, it's a very nice project. It's moving along, had a schedule. They're doing some fantastic work out there.
I'll move to approve claims of four million, seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars and ten cents.
Alderperson Wetzel. Thank you. Any further discussion? Jill, will you call the roll, please?
Bauer Frye.
Aye.
Beany.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Bernander.
Aye.
Crowley.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have discussion and possible action, proposed contract with accurate appraisal for two thousand and twenty-five through two thousand and thirty.
Okay, first I'll walk you through the document that was in your packet. In the past couple years, we've been doing annual reappraisal, and actually, I'm going to unmute. Our assessor is on the web call. Oh, and I'll just bring up her screen, because she has a presentation. So I'll introduce, we have two people on the call. On the left is our health insurance agent, who just is interested in assessing. And we have, and then Shonda, who is currently the city's assessor through accurate appraisals. So take it away. You can present what this contract means to the city of Portage.
Okay. Thanks for having me, very well. I did something on there, kind of a brief overview of a little bit, I know there's been some, I'm sure you're going to have impressions, but there's been some concerns of customer service issues. So I wanted to go ahead and let you know what we changed from twenty-three to twenty-four. Personally, I just took over Portage probably a month before your board. So I haven't tied, I think the board went much better than I did in twenty-three, and that being I have a good relationship, so we're hoping to continue that. But I'm, I'm just going to kind of link it through this, and I'll stop at the screens that are important of what we have changed. So this is just pretty much who we are and what we have going on in the municipality that we have and home managers that we have, level two, level three. This is just how we, how we gauge employees based on how we step up against the rest of, you know, the four to five hundred companies, and what's really important to us as a company. Just some reviews for you guys, if you want to look at our latest reviews, like forward. Okay, this part here is actually something that we have changed from twenty-three to starting last, actually, probably in the middle of twenty-three, we kind of started the shift of this. So we have three house coordinators, myself, Dana, and Kyle. Kyle's also one of our managers over Dana and myself. What we found happening, a lack of responsibility of turn around trying with emails and sometimes getting back to people and saying, I'm at a board for, or open book for three days, or I'm at a board, or I'm at a patient, those emails kind of stagnated. So what we did now is that we took an approach that we are kind of a team. So here's my, my new email is here. So if you use that email, one of the owners of the company, Jen, and myself, came on my team. He has access to my email as well as my other two house coordinators. So if there's ever a question or something that has to be answered right away, those people can look into that email box and give you guys the answer instead of waiting until I get back. We also started the assessment cycle. We do a kickoff meeting now, which I didn't have the opportunity last year to do that because I just came in as a board. So I'll do a kickoff meeting with this group, and then we'll have a pre-open book meeting. We'll get through everything that is, any concerns. We'll do the board, we'll have a pre-board meeting prior to the board, and then we'll do an after-end of year meeting, just to say, hey, what's coming to you in the summer? How do you think this year went? And then, so I'm just going to move it straight a little. Oh, did you now have three live, people answering the phones? I mean, that was an issue as of last year. And then it's grown to here. This is just social media stuff that we found really important. We, we started a big trend at the end of twenty-two. We now have two just marketing people, that, us and the house coordinators. So for example, I just went to the board yesterday to rehearse. We flexed like their utility bills, their social media, their Facebook page, because they saw an increase yesterday of ninety-five, twenty-five percent. So we spent the whole year knowing what that decrease was going to be, just educating their, their residence, commercial and residential. So it wasn't just like a huge shock, and we actually ended up having only two people at the board review, which is shocking, with a ninety-five percent increase. So we have people that will create anything that you might need, we can send it to the work, and just educate people as much as we can throughout the whole process.
And I've certainly noticed, the content that you're putting out on social media, it seems to be pretty well thought out, just trying to explain what assessments mean and how they work, and just because your assessment goes up, doesn't necessarily mean your taxes are going up, that whole mill. just because your assessment goes up, doesn't necessarily mean your taxes are going up, that whole mill, that whole mill rate, um, thing, so I, I think that has been helpful.
Because, you know, that's, I think their money makes people afraid and it makes people angry, and that's, that's what they think if it's something that needs taxes, and that's not necessarily the truth. But, but if you notice that, um, we also have a little thing we thought of that we can send out, um, then all we have to do is get email and it's called directly to the clerk, it automatically helps. Um, just have some basic information that we share. Um, this is more just, we, we did, um, do a new quality program, so we have three, um, boarders people that have moved into a quality department. Um, they are simply checking reviews, um, they are checking sales inputs, they are checking account coordinators, they are checking, um, at anything that has to do with the assessment before the assessments actually go out, so that we are all in the same cage, unless they begin a business subdivision. Um, new construction land checks are coming in, uniforming, and everything is checking out good. We get graded on that, as, and we do as another team, um, and it's actually really important to us, because they put it as part of our, your end goal there. So, um, that's a whole new, um, development team that we have in place this year. Um, that's kind of more on just the quality process. Um, we did develop our own intranets in here, so everything is, um, on what we call, um, the accurate appraisal intranets. So everything's interactive, we can look at anything at anywhere, you guys can pull up, um, we can pull up schedules, SOPs, you guys can pull up interactive, uh, property record cards. Everything is, um, right away on the, on your chart or text here. Um, this is largest metric. If I, am I going too fast?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, I just, because I just wanna touch on basically the points that I think were the issues, and I know we're gonna have questions. Um, we do have four new developers, not new, they've been there a couple of years now. This is just our software. This is the assessment cycle that everybody knows, I think I went through this expecting. Um, it's not, you know, surveying like this is what happens in your municipality, but it's just the cycle that happens. Uh, this is what happened in Portage in 2024, which is kind of your timeline. Um, okay, so this is kind of a, a great part that I, I do wanna just quickly just look over. Um, I do wish I was there with you guys for a full year, because I could have more to say. Um, but this is just the overview from when we did the board review, so we talked 298 residential, um, parcels, we talked to 97 commercial. The estimated new construction for your residential going into 25 is 2.6, commercial is 2.4. Um, we've had 41 open book appointments, we can see the total sales that three studies, and we kind of keep track of this for years to see. We built, I talked to 198 residential people and we have 50 at the board, well, there's no excuse for that, right? Um, it is, we don't like to squash every, I, I need to say that, we don't like to have a squashed board where there's nobody, but if we can at least talk them off the, like, again, integrity. Um, a ninety-five percent increase with two people, we just educate them on the phone basis, and you just say, listen, this is what you're paying us with those, um, this is where you come into sales. Or if you can come to board and we can have that, you know, conversation as well, but as long as we talk to those people. We also have a new process in place, which I think is coming up here. Yes, this is, this is really, so, um, prior to last year, we only had the option for a quick answer in open book, or to have the phone call, if you guys remember. So in 2023, we have the eighty-five, eighty-five thousand people between April and September. What we realized, the issue with that is every open book appointment was scheduled for a fifteen minute process, right? So that's four people an hour, so then this, this year, um, besides the open book process, which we also extended multiple than more than one day, um, with multiple vendors, we have gone to an email system, which is just like speaking to an assessor. So Portage will get your own email, it will say, kennyportage@chapterdissessor.com, and that will be all in their assessment. They will fill out a quick, um, it's not really questionnaire, like your opinion of value, within on-site transaction, what are your issues? Do you have enough freehold? Things like that, that will come back to us in an email. And we have noticed that that's probably part of the issue with two renters, um, this year was the same way. We can answer, um, well, I think on the next page, we, I think ten times the amount of, we get, ten times the amount of the emails that you can, um, with a four phone calls in an hour, right? And once we answer those emails, we just, we let them know, you know, if you still wanna have a conversation with us, just shoot us an email back. And we can go back and forth with more, that process is done, instead of saying, you know, I'm looking at the sales analysis on the phone, this is what I'm looking at. Um, there's no change to your property, we will bid. Um, and it's allowing us to answer more people, educate more people, and having, um, an explanation to them that they either understand or don't understand. Um, and if we don't have the assessment right, obviously we change that assessment based on the sales analysis, um, send in the waiver, if it's within the thirty days. Otherwise, we can make a change instantly and we just go right on to the next email. So, um, our customer service process, we can just as an assessor, not as a customer service team in advance, um, is way better this year. Um, this is just, we have, uh, new field technology, we're now digital live hours, we have that. So these are all bubbles, of persons they need to visit, um, and this will tell you a field of, uh, an office visit, a commercial, they can plan, it's just based on the color of the bubbles, and I add a bubble and they're doing field work in Portage today, and I add a new bubble, if a resident called in and says, I need some, some check on my property at whatever address, and I add that, it's gonna alert them that there's a new bubble instantly, and they can go to that bubble that same, whether they're doing field work. Yeah, that's just more field stuff.
And then I'll, I'll go, or yeah, we'll do questions first if anybody.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions?
So, um, personally, I've been, I've only talked to, um, Shonda a couple of times, but I thought she did a really good job at Open Book this year.
Yep.
It, it seems like the customer service product, our portion has, um, gotten a lot better, and I think it's just those things, they're fielding, what, seven? How many calls? I mean, they have many different communities besides Portage, and it seems like they're trying to address that. I think some complaints are just the fact of the nature of the work. They're assessing things, right? People sometimes don't like what they have to say. So there's, there's that too. Um, as far as the contract that we're looking at, um, the last couple of years, and please jump in if I'm saying something incorrectly, we've been doing full revales every year for the last couple of years, and, and that's pretty time intensive. We're in, since things, they're still increasing, but the, the level of increases year over year seem to be dropping a bit. Um, we're talking about doing, uh, maintenance in 25, 27 and 29, which is, uh, you just described what a maintenance, uh, con, or looks like versus a full revale?
Yes, um, so maintenance year means that the only people that are going to be resident and/or receiving an assessment change, um, this gets rid of change in the property, so you pull a permit, there's a higher in your house, new construction, a sale. Um, so we'll get all those back at this feature, those are the only people whose assessments are going to change in maintenance year.
An interim market update would be comparing to?
Okay, interim market updating, everybody will get an assessment change. Um, we will get the, um, sales in the department revenue, we'll bring you up to a hundred percent of the private, having said that. You should be very close to a hundred percent, even in the maintenance year, because if you do that every other year. Um, and then we look at the sales analysis, bring everybody up, we go by its neighborhood, it's the same style, um, same, as opposed to the same sort of footage and same style of house, and then we, um, we have all those sales in the department revenue. We bring it up to a hundred percent of the private actual sales in 2024, which, which would be 2024, so the year prior, um, end of January.
So staff's feelings on this are behind the scenes, we love working with that.
Yep.
They're really easy to work with on the staff end of things, the, the data that we can access, it's actually pretty good. So, uh, they're looking, the contract is worth, it's a six-year contract. There's thirty-three thousand dollars per year for this contract over six years. Not a large increase over what we're paying now, um, and we just believe that we'd like to continue working with them. To change everything would be a pretty gigantic task, um, and we feel pretty confident with the changes they've made for customer service.
Yeah, because in the past, there were some issues, but I will commend them, uh, the issues were brought to their attention, and obviously, they've done a, a great job of addressing those issues and, um.
I think I, I really do appreciate that we, we really value Portage, you guys are, are open contracts. Um, I will, I'm going toward, um, would be your statutory assessor and your account coordinator.
Alderperson Green.
Make a motion to approve the contract for accurate assessors for thirty-three thousand a year for six years.
Alderperson Wenzel. Any further discussion, comments? Jill, will you call the roll, please?
Beanie.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Wenzel.
Aye.
Bernander.
Aye.
Crowley.
Aye.
Bauer Frye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Paul.
Aye.
I thought you were reading the agenda.
I'm sorry.
I don't, do you have a question? Oh, okay. Um, thank you very much, uh, we'll get this paperwork over to you, Becky will be back next week, she'll be very pleased that we approved it. Okay. Thanks a lot.
Appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Their oldest contract, I don't know.
Okay, moving on to the next one.
Next, we have municipal services, discussion and possible action, garbage and recycling collection contract agreement with Columbia County.
All you, Phil.
Um, so the city contracts are garbage and recycling collection through Columbia County Solid Waste. Uh, our contract with them ends at the end of 2024, uh, so we're looking to renew that, uh, moving into 2025. Uh, this contract was originally entered into by the city in 2013, uh, and consisted of two separate amendments extending us out through 2024. Uh, Columbia County Solid Waste provided a new contract for years 2025 through 2029. This contract mirrors those of the original contract and its amendments. Um, the one thing about this new contract is the 2025 rates are not increased from 2024, which is great for a budget year, uh, like we have currently, um, and then they, in years 2026 through 2029, by a, by a twenty-nine percent. I'm recommending approval of this proposed contract with Columbia County Solid Waste for collection years 2025, 2026, 2027, 2028. Um, they've been a great partner to the city, um, since we entered into that original agreement.
Alderperson Green.
Make a motion to accept the contract with Columbia County Solid Waste for collection years 25 through 29.
Alderperson Bernander.
Second.
Any other questions, comments?
I think the citizens, they do really good customer service, just looking at it objectively, having dealt with a lot of garbage contractors. They do a pretty good job as far as when residents have an issue.
Alderperson Wenzel, did you have a question?
Yes. First, I heard that they're trying to sell, is that any truth to that?
It's already was all approved last night, the, 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 the facility will remain open.
They initially had the, in initial borrowing phase, uh, had failed by one vote earlier this week to rebuild the facility, and then they quickly called a special meeting and it was approved last.
So they're not selling.
Correct.
No. Has been an issue for, for the past few years, what are the chances of getting them to come back down the alleys to pick up trash?
Um, that'd probably be something that we'd have to look at for a contract amendment. It's probably, it's not off the table, in my opinion, um, we can certainly reach out to them and see what, uh, specific alleys they don't collect in currently, there are still some that they do. Determine what were those causing factors for not collecting in the alley.
Any other questions?
With the alleys though, I, I know it damages those alleys too, having those big trucks come through.
In most cases, yes, um, and fortunately, we're only able to pave a very few number of alleys, um, every other year. Um, so there's the, the issue of the pavement surface, as well as the surrounding vegetation, fences, garages, et cetera. Um, some of those alleys are fairly tight, um, so when they're cycling through drivers as much as they do, um, sometimes difficult.
Up until the time that we got the trash cans that they lift up, they were coming down a majority of the alleys.
Yep.
And then when they switched to that.
If it's a wider process, um, obviously, they have to have the room to spin out, so you can't set it next to your garage, per se.
Correct, correct, and I understand that, however, I have seen them come down my alley to pick up the garbage and the cans like that. So, that excuse is not totally viable.
And, and overhead wires are another issue. Arm pickup too.
Like I said, we can look at specific alleys that you have concerns over. Um, I, I was not, uh, involved in the process of switching from garbage collection in certain alleys to street side, um, but we can determine what, what would limit that.
Some of these garbage cans need to be moved off the street, it's trashy, sorry about it, Al.
Yeah, it is.
And then there's parking issues.
Oh, and I should mention, uh, they're open to replacing carts in the, in the near future, um, which would be really great for us, uh, just for reconciliation of everybody that has the service. Tough list to keep me.
Any other questions or comments? Jill, will you call the roll, please?
Green.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Wenzel.
Aye.
Bernander.
Aye.
Crowley.
Aye.
Bauer Frye.
Aye.
Beanie.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have discussion and possible action, resolution 24-037 relative to name change of Ridgeview Drive to Ridgeline Drive.
And Mr. Libidston?
Then why we would, why would we wanna change the name of the road?
Um, so we were running into an issue with the new subdivision, uh, with regards to mail drop-off. Um, there is a Ridgeview Court within city limits, and there's also a Ridgeview Drive within the county. Um, so they were having issues with, uh, the mail service out there, um, so this is just a formality. Um, change the name now before we have people that are, are, or out there. Um, do it now while there's very few people, um, so it's really just a, a, a name at this point, it's appeasing the mail service. Yes, very important.
Alderperson Green.
Make a motion to adopt resolution number 24-dash-Jill-37.
Alderperson Bernander.
Second.
Any further discussion? Jill, will you call the roll, please?
Paul.
Aye.
Wenzel. Bernander.
Aye.
Crowley.
Aye.
Bauer Frye.
Aye.
Beanie.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Aye.
And passes. Next we have human resources discussion and possible action, MOU with New York for, or New Life for Work LLC regarding program to reduce and maintain workers' compensation claims for fire and EMS.
I have it on here. This was another recommendation from the Human Resources Committee from last night. So, um, once again, I'll keep it summary. Uh, New Life is a Portage business. Uh, they're located on Dupinary, uh, next to Aspen Behavioral Health. They provide a service which, and evidence will show, can significantly reduce workman's comp claims, uh, within a certain industry. Um, the owner, um, and the advocate for Matt Vander Coy, he had made a very long presentation to the Human Resources Committee last year. Now, it, it really all ties into this healthcare thing. So when we're in, when we are in ETF technically yet, um, our pool is everybody that's a local employee in the state of Wisconsin. Our pool's healthiness does impact rates, but it's not very direct, right? Because it's a huge pool. The kind of service that he wants to provide to our EMS and fire service is to catch chronic and developing musculoskeletal, skeletal issues before they become bigger issues. They're one of the leading, they're the most rising cost in the healthcare industry. This is bone, muscle, nerve ending, you know, anything that generally causes a workman's comp claim for the city. Uh, not medical, that would still be facilitated at a hospital in a, a normal way. But imagine a, a situation where an employee strains some, some muscle. And I'm thinking specifically with EMS, because they will be on the road a lot. They will be lifting a lot. They'll be interacting all sorts of new sorts of activities that we haven't done before. Generally, you would go to the emergency room. You'd say this, I have this. They, you would fill out a form that says workman's comp. And then they throw every diagnostic test at you to figure it out. Very costly. One claim can cost the city tens of thousands of dollars easily, because health insurance doesn't cover it. All workman's comp is 100% to the city. And New Life System, uh, first of all, the employee has an app. They check in every month about any developing new issues. Um, if they are starting to become issues, and it could have happened at home or whatnot, um, you can go to his clinic, uh, an unlimited amount per month to work on those issues. He is not a chiropractor, but I would say he's somewhere between that and a physical therapist. The, the success story, and I would go back to the Human Resources meeting. The video is still on there from last year. The evidence is pretty overwhelming. Cardinal Glass, uh, Break Bush, several million dollars of reduction in workman's comp claims, um, which is, would be massive. We have a very bad, uh, workman's comp multiplier in the city. It's 1.4, uh, would mean we're 40% over the average or where we should be. We're not necessarily worried, but we'd like to get out in front of the EMS workers because they're going to be new and we don't want costs to escalate. Make sure that referendum amount is correct. Now that we may be moving to a group health plan, this provides a double benefit for us. Um, if you're in better shape in the musculoskeletal realm, you're going to be in better shape overall. Your health costs will probably go down on the group health side. Um, this is, we're launching this as a pilot program in EMS fire. Um, it'll be for 21 employees. It's 735 a month for 21 employees. That's unlimited access, unlimited time at a clinic, monitoring, and working with our will-be personal trainer on staff. In the last union contract, the union agreed to, they have exercise requirements daily, physical fitness tests. We really want to drive down healthcare costs, um, as they continue to go up. And by moving into that self-rated pool, we sort of control our own destiny now. So I think it's money well worth it. There's a $2,459 setup fee, which you'd come in as soon as the new people are showing up in November, getting everyone onboarded, pre-screened, going through, uh, you know, their medical history to determine where they are and what is to improve. Even if something starts on a personal level, it can easily happen at work where it becomes catastrophic and then that's where the city is lost. The avoidance of one claim, on average, would pay for this annually. So, um, the only way that we'll be able to judge if it's working or not is what we've avoided, because this is a new service. But we can look at actuarial tables, information from other services and determine, hey, wow, we're doing really well. Look at how many claims we didn't have. Here are the things that were avoided. Um, if it doesn't show any proof of working, um, then we cancel it. If it does work, then I think we probably roll it out further. I have a feeling like it's going to work very well. 735 a month, 2459 to set up. And I'm, I think everybody's actually pretty excited about it. Employees generally see this as a benefit. Um, there are bodies that will be the beneficiary of it. City's finances, the other benefit.
Alder Person Green.
Uh, one question I forgot to ask last night.
Sure.
Um, on the budget side of it, this, because it's ambulance and fire rolling out, that's going to come out of the referendum money or general budget?
Um, especially the, the new hirees are all EMS.
Yeah.
We'll have to split it out a little bit into the fire for the existing firefighters.
Okay.
But we want them to be in part of it too, because they're going to be on ambulance potentially too.
Okay.
We really just want to, we could have gone with the per visit cost, but I just don't like that arrangement, because then every time something happens, you're like, is this worth 79.99? Probably is, and then something happens and you wish you had done it. So I'd rather just have the unlimited plan to see the full effect.
Yep.
Alder Person Green.
I make a motion to go ahead with the contract with, uh, New Life. For the...
Long word musculoskeletal, that's workers' compensation.
For the work, yeah.
Claims for fire and EMS.
For fire and EMS.
There we go. Alder Person Bernander. Does anyone else, does anyone have any other questions, comments? Jill, will you call the roll, please?
Wetzel.
Aye.
Bernander.
Aye.
Crowley.
Aye.
Power Frye.
Aye.
Beanie.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
And passes. Next we have discussion and possible action, resolution 24-036 relative to withdraw from Wisconsin Public Employers Group Health Insurance Program.
So, not a small matter. Uh, the resolution, uh, it's required by state law that a resolution is filed every year about the city's intent to stay, change, or leave. Thought about this a lot. Uh, we are not able to rejoin for three years. And if we have more than 50 people, which we do, uh, we must undergo underwriting to rejoin. And a surcharge would be assessed at that point. The surcharge, I wasn't totally aware of this. The city can't pay the surcharge if we rejoin. Only the employees can. And that was part of Act 10 era rules. So if we do rejoin, legally, it has to be split amongst the employees. I don't necessarily understand that whole thing, but that is what it is. Um, the way I look at it, costs are going up 15% a year guaranteed through '27. If by the end of three years, we've gone up 20%, well, ETF went up 45%, so we're still in. I'd be, I have to wait and see, but Dean is looking at generally around 7% increases year over year. ETF's looking at 14 to 15. Carmen, do you have any final words?
No, I mean, yes, no, sorry. So your, um, Dean's average trend is about 7%, but what I'm hearing with the amount of the municipalities that are pulling out of the ETF, I honestly do not see them sustaining only a 12 or 14 or 15% rate increase. Because the only ones that are going to be unfortunately in the ETF within the next couple of years are going to be the state. So, I mean, I hate to say it, but it really is not going to be looking good for the ETF in the upcoming years, and that's unfortunate. They should have been doing their due diligence of increasing little by little, uh, through the years, but they didn't do that. So now they're trying to make up their reserve that was spent out.
And if Dean would go up dramatically, of course, we would, could re-quote it with a different insurer.
Absolutely. We, so what we do as an agency, every year we look at it, we go and make sure that we're doing our due diligence for your group to make sure that we're not just taking an increase just to take an increase. So every year we will look at it and we will evaluate what the best options are for you.
Um, it isn't a small fact that having a broker or an agent, I don't know if brokers are a real... is a significant change for us. Um, having somebody that can actually advise us on a deal when an employee gets a rejected claim. Right now, it would be me and Becky and calling a state agency. Now I can go right to the broker and they can figure it out. Um, that is going to increase, I'll call it customer service, when there are issues. I, I look forward to that.
Alder Person Bernander.
Move to approve resolution 24-dash-036 relative to withdraw from Wisconsin Public Employers Group Health Insurance Program.
Alder Person Wetzel. Anyone have any other questions or comments? Jill, will you call the roll, please?
Bernander.
Aye.
Crowley.
Aye.
Power Frye.
Aye.
Beanie.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Wetzel. Motion passes.
Alder Person Paul, would you like to make the next motion? Thank you. Alder Person Green.
I was going to hit.
Yeah.
Do we have to approve the, uh, you having authority to?
No.
So we need a number four.
Yep.
Oh, the, yeah, so that resolution was pulled off the agenda. I, I'll just be honest, last week at this time, I was sort of freaking out. We got this quote and I was not sure how I was going, everything I was going to need to execute all of this, if we went down that route. I feel like I do understand everything now and I'm pretty confident that the direction given, I can engage and do all the things I need to get this done. Um, if I do, if something would need council approval, um, and it was within the realm of what we're talking about, I would execute and then bring to council, execute it, telling them that, okay, I just need to get this approved on October 10th. But it appears that all those things are going to be achievable. I feel good about it.
Jill, will you call the roll, please?
Crowley.
Aye.
Power Frye.
Aye.
Beanie.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Bernander.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Carmen.